It's five o'clock and this is the special called meeting of the Dunn Woody City Council. And unless there's an objection, I call this meeting to order. Seeing no objections, the meeting is called to order. First up is Michael Starling with an update on Edge City 2.0 project. The floor is yours.
Forty-five minutes, thank you. Forty-five minutes will give you an opportunity to really delve into the Edge City 2.0 deeply. So we've got a lot to show you. I did give you a handout, paper copy of the presentation that you'll see, and we'll also email it to you in a bit. So I'm going to hand it over to our consultant team. Andrew Kors here with Pond to go over the presentation. As a sort of a reminder to everybody, the Edge City 2.0 project, our hope is, and it's designed to create a community-driven as well as a market feasible vision for the future of perimeter center. And so we've done a lot of work sort of behind the scenes to look at what the demand is over the long term, which will be presented to you tonight. But we've also done a lot of work with the community getting what they want out of it. So next step is we're going to try to meld those two things together. So Andrew's going to come and go through a presentation. Please ask questions. We've got a couple more briefings for you later this summer. So this will not be the only time you hear this. So Andrew, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Michael. My colleague Jonathan Crone and I are going to be tag teaming this presentation. I'm just, and Martin Anci is on as well. Martin, can you hear us? And I'll mute yourself.
Yes, I can, Andrew. Thanks.
Great. Awesome.
And if he could be, Martin, if you could just be a little louder, please.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you when you talk.
All right, so we're going to tag in this presentation. I'm going to be, it's really a two-part presentation. One, we want to give you kind of a progress of where we are to date, especially as it comes to public engagement. And then we're going to do a little deeper dive into the economics and kind of looking at the different capacities for different land use typologies that Edge City 2.0 can handle. And that's where we're going to kind of be the baseline as we move forward into the scenario planning. So Jonathan, I'm going to let you come up and begin the presentation. I'll just be here.
All right, good afternoon or evening, Mayor Council. Not sure what time of day it is. Okay. All right, we'll be giving a brief overview of the planning process, what we've done to date as well as our findings. So I'll keep this portion of the presentation pretty brief. We've spoken to many of you in our stakeholder interviews. So for, you know, as you know, for this study, the boundaries are really just from Dunn Woody's western boundary all the way over to North Fork and Nancy Creek in the east, and of course extending from south of City Hall to I-285. So in the study, the need for the study really emerged for a multitude of reasons. But you know, one of them being the most recent comprehensive plan update, identifying the need for city perimeter center to become walkable, connected, connected, livable regional center. So I've been diving into some of the current land use patterns as well as looking into transportation, demographics, the economics of the study area as a part of the beginning of our research and discovery. So we have completed that and moved into our vision phase where we have gone heavy into public engagement and really just reached out to the community. We've been really appreciative of city staff in terms of, you know, organizing these events. They've been pretty successful in attracting people to come out and provide their input. So we'll be sharing a little bit of that with you today as well. As a result of this teetering between the vision and framework, we kind of have been able to form thematic principles that we are currently still working on with the city to move forward with scenario planning. I mean, I'll get into that a little bit more, but Martin will discuss this slide here.
Oh, thanks, Jonathan. Yeah, just to build on what Jonathan was saying. We sort of, the left side of this graph is all about creating what the ingredients are, doing a thorough market analysis of the Edge City area and the wider surrounds to understand what the supply and demand conditions are and so forth, the trends and projections, financial aspects of it. We also look at sort of a macro perspective of trends in real estate development overall, how we're all, everything has changed in how we travel and how we work and where we live and shop and are entertained and so forth. So we took all those macro inputs as well to understand. And finally, just looking at the sort of demand equation of who's visiting, the demographics of people who live in the area, the changing nature of employment in the area and so forth. And it all gets fed into a development program, which is sort of the ingredients, the amount of square footage of each of these uses of commercial and residential uses. And that goes into, I guess, the way you could, the recipe of the scenario planning, which Pond will speak to.
So like Martin said, this has really been a culmination of a lot of different information coming from all different directions. You know, so with the scenario planning that we're getting into, one of the major outcomes of this whole process will be a preferred scenario that the city can sort of move forward with with different recommendations that we'll have for you. But to do that, we are really taking into account the public input and the developments, the development program that MXD has formulated to do a lot of GIS analysis and conduct an iterative process where we visualize what the next 20 years could look like in terms of development. And so we'll be evaluating that, conducting workshops with the Stakeholder Advisor Committee that has met two times now. And and once we, once we come to a preferred scenario, you know, we will vet that with the public and with you to eventually come up with recommendations for what that could look like. So, you know, the city, once the city chooses that preferred scenario, we will provide the city with a document that has a roadmap of different steps that you can take within the next five years and forward to implement, to implement Edge City 2.0. So progress today, what we've done so far, public involvement. We've had two stakeholder advisory committee meetings, like I mentioned, as well as two public meetings, and we've held 14 stakeholder interviews, which it's been a lot, a lot of meetings, but a lot of great input. People have been very receptive of this. A part of, a major part of this whole process has been a public education element component to this. So what, at the public open house, we had 31 participants, of course, people who brought their families, where we hosted that at the terraces, the north terraces. We've also had a pop-up event at the Endeavor Montessori School where 46 people signed into that as well. At that event, people that lived in the apartments were able to come and also participate and provide their input. So some of the key takeaways here, we have, we asked, what does the future of the perimeter center represented Dunn Woody? And one of the biggest responses that we received was a walkable community supporting multi-generational living. And that's supported by many things, of course, right? But I think one of, some of the key desires here that we see here on the screen really do support that in terms of walkability, providing, you know, more public gathering spaces within the perimeter center, parks and trails, leveraging MARTA. And of course, looking at the retail, I mean, looking into retail east of Ashford Dunn Woody, since, you know, it's more sparse on that side of the study area. So we were able to do our public engagement using mapping activities. One of, as you can see here on the screen is, you know, people put pushpins down into a map and they place their comments, and we were able to combine those into our GIS software. Another one that was a little more facilitated conversation, we use blocks and beads for people to identify where they think trail connections might be appropriate, as well as different uses, identifying places where uses might be appropriate. And it was interesting, interesting to see this conversation play out because, you know, residential, you know, has residential development. People want to see different things, but it's, we need to start aligning like what that, what that might look like over the next 20 years. And that, that could be a variety of different uses. We'll go, we'll go through those in a moment here. But and here's some images of preference imagery. People were able to choose what types of developments and amenities they wanted to see in terms of images. And what you'll see in the next few slides that Andrew and Martin are going to go over, we go through each of the asset classes, including the uses like hotel, retail, residential and hotel, and show you what we heard from the community in terms of what we saw on the map, as well as some key photographs that represent imagery of what the perimeter center could look like over the next few years. So, and these are just some images of people that participated in our whiteboard activity, placing keywords about their vision for the study area. So we, we have a lot more of these and we received a lot of input, but what you'll see here in a moment is some of the, what culminated from that public input. So I'll go ahead and hand it over back to Andrew. Thank you.
Make sure I can hide the. Still there?
Okay.
Still there?
Yeah.
Is there an IT problem? Because we have.
I just want to make sure you can see the entire screen. That's all. Okay, good. It's on the screen outside of the kitchen. Okay, well, let's, let's go back to the findings. So thank you again, Jonathan, for kind of giving us a background. As I mentioned, Martin and I are going to tag team this portion of the presentation. Yeah, the first part is understanding the competitive positioning. So Martin, I'm going to let you kind of speak to this one for a moment.
Yeah, for sure. Thanks, Andrew. So essentially, the way we started off was to sort of zoom out a little bit and look at what's been going on in the metro area, to look at these various other suburban nodes and to understand their competitive positioning. One way to look at that is to sort of look at the mix of housing, multifamily housing versus commercial space, meaning retail, office and hotel. And as, and the way you can sort of place every one of those nodes in the area on a spectrum ranging from pretty much very much multifamily oriented as the percentage of overall sort of square footage, which is dedicated to multifamily use versus something like Alpharetta, North Point Activity Center, which is essentially almost entirely commercial in its orientation. And as you can see, Dunn Woody Edge City right now sort of fits somewhere in the middle of that spectrum of being a sort of a balance of multifamily and commercial uses.
Sorry, that's me, mine. Give me a second. Here we go. One of the things we did as a team is come up with kind of four Ps, as we call them, really how we think about the decision-making process, right? And what we've always said from the beginning of this project is, you know, as consultants, we're going to do this plan. We're going to work with you. But at the end of the day, the reality is, as council staff, the entire community, it's, it's the role to help implement this. So we want to make sure you have an achievable plan that you can do that. With that being said, there's kind of, there's four ways to think about the scenario that you want to see going forward that'll impact that. One is potential. So you have to take the reality of what the potential demand can be, simply from what the market says, right? And so, and so there is a strong demand for continued multifamily. There's a moderate demand for office and retail and a weak demand for hotel. We certainly have a reason, we think there are ways to augment that. The future looks, you know, very different from the past because as you know, coming out of COVID, people are living differently, working differently and desiring different things. But there's also a lot of competitive nodes with similar visions. So you have to keep that in mind. And we've heard this from you all and from the community. We want to be Dunn Woody, not copy of somebody else. So we have to keep that in mind as well. As Martin said, like the recipes, I want to remind you that each of these four Ps, you, you work with, within each of these to make what you want the model to happen. So it's not simply, you simply rely on the potential. You have to rely on those other three concepts. So you have the, you have the physical. You do have a fragmented streetscape. It's, you know, it is somewhat suburban in nature, especially in the quarry, large multifamily blocks, less walkable in certain areas. There is no clear main and main in the Edge City area. If you talk to a lot of people, they will connect with Dunn Woody Village, say that's kind of my main and main, or very my local community. But for this study area, there is no that discernible main and main where I can go and say, as an example, I'll say Peachtree and Lennox, and everyone knows where that is and what's happening there. Man, like the uses around it, but everyone knows that iconic main and main category. It's also automobile dominant and the pedestrians are secondary. And this is something we've heard over and over is that we want to see more walkability. There is walkability happening actually in the different quadrants, let's say, of the study area. But there is a major challenge of crossing, for instance, Ashford Dunn Woody. It feels like a major barrier. The other challenge is even you have some roads that need to be retrofitted over time, right? That were originally dominated by cars, but now more and more you walk out there and you see people wanting to use them more, right? So we're having to think about that and kind of retrofit. And so that's one way we think about this. The other is people, what people are wanting and what you're needing. We've heard a lot of people, both and totally, and what we know is that we want a variety of housing types. Right now, you've typically had, you've kind of had a binary set of housing types, or a single-family residential, which is largely the makeup of most of Dunn Woody. And then you have multifamily that really dates a lot of it. And I know there's stuff online, but dates obviously to the early 2000s and the kind of garden-style apartment, I'll call it. But you kind of have those two areas and there's very little in between. And there's very little places to move up or move down. Meaning if you're a young couple, where do you go buy something that's affordable as your first home? And where do you move down if you want downsides? So you're kind of locked in. And then we, we don't want those people to leave because those are valuable members of the community, but we have to give them options. So keeping that in mind, things we heard, and then also that external walkable retail offering, right? That you can walk up to the shop. It's what we envisioned of a, we grew up in traditional downtowns, where you can walk from store to store in the outdoor setting, park it, park one time and walk. These are the desires that what we're hearing more and more from people. So what they need and what we know is successful. Then you have the political realities. So we have to kind of balance that, right? One is the DeKalb School District, right, is overcrowded. And we know that, we've heard that concern from you all, and we understand that. Multifamily provides additional burden, you know, from, from a number of different ways, from the infrastructure. So you have to think about balancing that. One reality is that the CID, which is a valuable partner, they don't really get money from the multifamily. They only get it from commercial, retail and office. So how do you balance that? But you want to have people there to use the spaces in the retail. So you're kind of working with that. And then there is a lot of perception about just the realities of, okay, if I bring more mixed use, that causes more traffic. We're trying to inverse that actually and say, if it more used, it's more walkable. There's less travel time, less trips. There's, you know, and currently right now, there is no local transit circulator, anything to move people around. There's just a, there's a lack of that. So there are ways to combat that. But we want to be very realistic and say there is a political component too. And so again, ultimately, we want to find the right recipe that works. And that's the tension we're going to play with during these scenarios. We're going to go through kind of what we've heard in terms of different amenities and then go to the land uses. We start with amenities and we start with transportation because it's the building blocks for healthy communities. And kind of building, you know, working from the, from the bottom ground up. Again, the areas in green, they're kind of, kind of a, these are areas that are a variety of people dotted and said, hey, it'd be nice to have something here. For what we've heard, the reality that could be very different based on what we determined. But ultimately, what we've heard is we want some park, we want more park space. We want more like an amphitheater, outdoor and outdoor entertainment. One of the things you'll hear when we talk about like weak hotel demand in the area, well, hotel demand can grow if there's more destinations for you to go. So you have something to come to, right? Great outdoor spaces, event venues, things are bringing people out. That can then begin shifting it. So I use that as an example of those recipes, that, you know, you tweak one thing, it creates implication for another. When we did the visioning exercise and how people put dots on, you know, what they prefer to see in terms of amenities, these were the top three images that came up. I think you have to always take this within the context it's given. We give people a wide variety of, it's very open-ended. So every person who shows up to that board has a different, a different idea in mind, right? Where they're coming from. So we keep that in mind. But what you see is outdoor space, you see public art, you see a destination where there's outdoor festivals and events, right? And so I think that's the key takeaway from there, that people are desiring that. And what you've done so far, people want more of it. That's a good thing. So in terms of when we think about kind of supportive land uses and amenities to do that, you begin thinking about, okay, a food and beverage cluster, getting people together and supporting that, right? I'll use the West Side Beltline Trail. There's now a number of different breweries in the West Side Beltline. It's become a district in and of itself. It was organic and now it's kind of taken off. That's a very obvious one, but there are other ways to do that. Public lawn and event spaces, where you can kind of open space and go out and just walk around and do different things. Programmed events, programmed events that are different than kind of a traditional active park, right? We're talking passive park where people can come out, listen to concerts, food trucks, those types of things. We've heard outdoor recreation, how can I get around and move around? You have a fragmented system, but you're close to starting to fill in the gaps of trails and connectivity. People want more of that. Again, arts and culture, daycare, even daycare centers in elementary schools. So you imagine if you have, if you locate those and think about that long-term, locating open space next to elementary schools and daycares, you can begin connecting the dots here. Now it's a family-oriented space. Multi-purpose spaces and venues. So these are all things are building blocks for healthy communities that people desire. The trick is how do you blend that into ultimately what you want to see in terms of land uses? So they all go hand in hand. In terms of transportation, we've heard a lot of people who walk to their place of work. There are people who have moved and said, first or second, second or third careers, and we want to move there and actually walk, they walk very locally. That's awesome to hear, because we want to see that. There are concerns, I mentioned, crossing some major of the corridors and connecting different parts of the area. If you look at that map right now on the screen, you essentially have four quadrants. Okay. The mall dominating the lower left. And then on the east side, you have a lot of former office and some residential, and there's a residential and mix of office to the top left. But you have these four quadrants that we kind of think about conceptually, and how do you begin connecting all of them together? There are a number of different connection opportunities, whether it's residential to retail and also Ashford Dunn Woody. We know there's vision in place for Ashford Dunn Woody. We recognize that, but there is a desire for people to see more of that and more of those connections. And then one of the things we've said at the beginning that I'll, I want you to take away from this is, you'll notice there are some connections going beyond the study area. That's a key component to break down this barrier of Dunn, the rest of Dunn Woody and perimeter center. Part of that is connecting physically and making feel like it's part of one community. Again, several different images. But again, people want larger sidewalks, places to bike, making it feel safe for entire families to move and navigate around and feel comfortable. I think the bottom right's unique as well. Large, even think about your intersections, you know, where do you cluster people across the road? Is it attractive? Is it active? Does it feel safe and comfortable, right? Whether you're in a bike, protected intersection, you can walk. That's critical as well. So these are things that take time, but you can begin having a vision what that might look like. You know, there are some things, we talked about trail network connectivity. You're starting to do that, but doing more of it, introducing the signage and wayfinding that you've already been developing, that's key. You're already on the way there. If we begin talking about distinctive nodes, now you have reasons to, better ways to use signage and connect people and kind of branding those different nodes so people can connect to them. There's a lot of last mile connectivity, especially with MARTA, to fill in those gaps and to connect. One of the things we mentioned here is a local circulator. There is an obvious, if you look at, I think most people can see there's a pretty obvious loop that you begin connecting that can reduce the small trips. You know, if I want to get in a car or I don't have access to a car or the, you can, you know, you can connect. And then again, one of the big ones, continue to retrofit Ashford Dunn Woody Road to making it, it is a signature corridor, but making it feel viable for all users. A trail helps with that, but it's one component, whether it's signage, wayfinding, the whole component. So now this is where I'm going to tag team a little more with Martin. We have, we did the kind of the groundwork with parks and amenities and, and transportation. We're going to kind of work vertical now, and we're going to begin with the retail market. So Martin, I'll give a little context and begin starting with this slide.
Thanks, Andrew. Yeah, we, as Andrew mentioned, we looked at each sort of ingredient separately to look at the market and really zooming in here on the Edge City 2.0 area. And the bottom line is, I mean, the first thing to understand is that the amount of retail space being developed anywhere nationally is a fraction of what it was 10, 20 years ago. Retail is very much sort of different and quantitatively and qualitatively than it was before, as I'm sure we're all aware, shopping online and so forth. But what we can see is Edge City 2.0 area is, is fairly healthy. It's got better rental rates than the metro average. There's been fairly solid growth in rental rates, and a lot of that's driven by fairly low vacancy rates of just over five and a half percent or so. And from an investor's perspective, you know, very healthy cap rates as well. So all of this was fed into our, into our analytical models and essentially coming out with a program of 681,000 square feet of, of demand of additional space over the next 20 years. But I do want to add an important caveat. This includes all of the space, which is currently either under construction or in planning stages. So the amount left over actually is fairly small. So I think the important thing to understand with retail market, it's going to be about redevelopment as much as it is about new development, if not more so. And, and the nature of that redevelopment is more, will be much more focused on food and beverage and entertainment, as well as convenience, such as grocery, drugstore and so forth, and services. That's sort of the future of new retail development.
Again, what we've heard, and it's similar to other things, you know, there are areas that are kind of shopping centers that are kind of aging out that could be redeveloped, right? You think about the Walmart shopping store, areas like that. Kind of primary mall area is an obvious one. It's, it is a it while successful, it opens up opportunities to think differently, right? The outdoor walkable retail space. And so again, we're trying to think, we want to think of ways for a variety of residents to enjoy. That's what we've heard. Martin's commentary about retail has changed over 20 years. You hear that a lot from our interviews and when we talk to people is, you know, 10, 20 years ago, you take, you took your kids to the mall. You don't do that now. It's kind of a change in who's going and how you're using the mall and how you vision the mall even. So retail is changing and we want to think of how we, that redevelopment might look like. When we asked people, kind of looking at the pop-up events and the public meeting, what you thought about, again, it's amenity-laden retail, outdoor space connected to food and beverage typically, and it's very branded. So there's places people can connect to, right? Visually, so again, not surprising, you'll hear some common themes tonight. Some ideas to explore and Martin kind of, I'm going to hit a couple of these, but if there's others you think could be good. But I think you look at High Street, we talked about not a lot of retail. High Street's going to take up a lot of that retail, absorb it from those numbers. So keep that in mind as we think about that. The areas around primary mall, open opportunities to new infill and new types of retail. The biggest, one of the larger players, owners, and could modernize the kind of core of that area. And then food and beverage, kind of those daily services, as Martin mentioned. Those are key areas that we think about. So Martin, anything to add to that?
The only one I'd say that the key one is, is the land prices, the bottom boat point. Essentially, I mean, the land is so highly valued in that area that it does support higher density development through structured parking and things like that, infill of land. And so that is an important force as well in scenario planning and just, so not just the amount of retail, but its nature and form and so forth.
I'm going to turn our attention to office. Yeah, Martin, I want you to continue with this slide.
Yeah, absolutely. So the, it's the office market is an interesting one. It's a little bit of the tale of two cities. You have the area around MARTA stations, which are incredibly valued for, for office and very appealing. And then elsewhere where it's not practical really for someone to take MARTA is very different office market, very high vacancy rates and very little demand, a lot of sublease space available and so forth. But overall, so you know, it's still central perimeter, which is the, you know, the submarket name is very much appealing still to sort of larger corporate tenants. But, but there is sort of an ongoing high level of vacancy for certain areas away from MARTA. And all of this adds up to essentially 1.8 million square feet of additional office space demand over the next 20 years. When you net out what's, what's currently in, under construction or planning, that comes down to about 1.1 million square feet.
Again, a lot of people who participate actually worked in the study area, which is good to hear. So being people connected to where they live and work, which is good. A lot of people have said, I like where the office is right today, like the new office they're seeing, developer in the MARTA station, they like that. That makes sense because you're connected to transit, thinking long-term, you know, maybe scattered out so far, as Martin said, maybe not be as practical and as desirable for people. The other thing that we've heard a lot from people is they want to see good design, kind of iconic architecture, right? You'll see the pictures. I'm going to show you in a second. So the one on the left, right? Okay, probably not going to see that anytime in the future in premier, but it's a pretty, why do they, people pick that, right? Because it's iconic. People have drawn. Because it's iconic. People have drawn to it. And I think that goes to good design standards that are drawing people, not just cookie cutter office development, right? So how can you, whether it's new office, really have a signature building, a signature architectural design guidelines, or if you retrofit buildings, how can you continue to add to that? There'll be a draw. Again, these items are all linked together. Um but again, you even have like the one in the middle, you have a higher rise office with what I call kind of a jewel box, kind of an active amenity space around. So you don't have that dead zone where it's like, okay, after five o'clock, where does everyone go? There's a place they're going, there's a place they're walking to. And for all people, right? So you're not building, it's nice to build retail for the people who are in the offices, but you want the residents to use it too. So it's got to feel like a community space, not, well, that's where the corporate people go and I'm the resident. So that's not me. It's got to be feel for both and 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 kind of community driven. Um so again, good, you know, good bones, good connection to the street, how it relates to the street, I think are those those elements here that you see. A couple of ideas, uh ideas to explore first is filling out the existing space. This is a twenty year vision, right? So yeah, it sounds like a big number, but you got twenty years to fill it and we got to fill the first space for, you know, existing space first. A lot of what's proposed could absorb like high, e- even that's on the books yet, but could absorb that. Both Cindy Springs and Dunwoody. So you have to be, sounds like a big number now, but that number drops significantly. It can go down pretty quickly. So be just cognizant and aware of that. You know, the other thing we've talked about, we've mentioned this before, is leveraging uh the growing healthcare sector. You know, how do you connect, you're right there, right? Next door, how do we connect with that and kind of build upon that? Um and there's a number of different demands to to target, um whether it's professional, scientific, technical services, information services, finance, these are, it it's diverse. It's not just one type of industry you're trying to get to. Martin, anything to add to that?
Uh yeah, I mean, it it's really uh it's about the sort of format and uh about attracting young talent, particularly for some of those economic sectors that are so fast growing in the local area, such as the scientific, technical kind of work, uh tech stuff. And so uh the it's important to recognize that, you know, office isn't sort of monolithic. You can have really interesting immersive mixed-use spaces that are embedded and you know, very interesting uh transit friendly locations. And on the other end of the spectrum, you can have sort of only, you can only get to it with your car, very fragmented. And and that latter kind of, you know, the the eighty's style, if you will, office, it is gonna be an ongoing challenge, definitely, to to find tenants and and for that space to be uh filled out over the longer term. Yeah, now now with the hotel market, I mean, as as you're well aware, that it's recovering everywhere, and I'm happy to say it's it's recovering in the H C D area as well. Uh the occupancy rate is 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 low, but it's it's catching up to pre-pre COVID levels. And uh but and the important thing to keep in mind, though, i- in this case is the the whole, the entire submarket kind of plateaued about ten or twelve years ago, and it never really, there were other parts of Metro Atlanta that were really took off as hotel areas, and and this wasn't one of them. And so when we were doing our projections, um it's important to keep in mind, just as Andrew alluded to earlier, that if you create the destination, the really interesting place that attracts not just the corporate business travelers, but families and so forth, then the hotel demand can can very easily uh grow uh quickly. So in this case, we're we're still sort of projecting this based on uh historic sort of patterns and so forth. But but do be aware, and you know, w- we're seeing sort of a demand for five hundred and fifteen rooms only over twenty years. And all of that is taken out by projects that are currently under construction or in planning right now. So but that number could potentially increase if we get the other uh components right in the in this development.
Yeah, I mean, there's there's kind of two obvious locations for hotel, right? One is um around the mall area, because you already have concentrated retail. Another option people have shared, one potential is when you think about redevelopment, if there, if it occurs at the Walmart shopping center, if like, remember, like, that feels like a multi-phased, you know, really potential impactful, if ever occurs over time. That could be a location, right? To kind of build in, we're not talking a thousand rooms, we're talking, you know, what does it look like scalable? But that is, that makes the most sense kind of because you're slow. You could potentially be connected to amenities in those, both those locations, right? The redevelopment of that, I I I keep using the redevelopment Walmart facility, uh shopping center, but if you were introduced amenities in that space and connected to a multi-phase development, now you're talking, like that, that could be a a desire potentially. So again, what's the draw? Again, people want good architecture, you know, whether it's midsize, kind of a J W Marriott, or you're not getting the Denver Airport Hotel, but the idea is you want, people are like, we love that kind of architecture, we want to see some iconic here. So I think that's the takeaway. I think Martin hit a couple of these. There are some smaller examples of boutique hotels. Um some of you are probably familiar with the autograph collection by Marriott or the curio collection by Hilton. They're really kind of upscale boutique hotels that'd be part of larger developments or part of a redevelopment. Those could be something you kind of target. As a, as as no, High Street may be the better location for that or near there. Um so into the Hotel Avalon, if you're familiar with that as well. So kind of linking it to redevelopment as part of every, building it out. Um and we mentioned this before, you want to develop a trendy address as well as shifting the perception of the office. So right now, people think it's office, it's mall. How do we kind of shift that to where it's for everybody? So. Residential.
Yeah, that. And uh a- as I'm sure you're well aware, the residential market is is the one of the the greatest demand uh monthly, you know, very strong monthly rental rates. Enormous growth in 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 rent year over year. And not just in the submarket, of course, across Metro Atlanta and many other markets as well, but it's a very strong submarket. People want to live there. It's a desirable place. People want to live in in the area. Vacancies are quite low. And even condo uh price, you know, are generates pretty strong um price points. So so overall, there is a strong demand for multifamily, uh seventy-seven hundred units, using again our our moderate scenario. Uh and once you've netted out uh everything that's either planned or in construction, you're still left with nearly thirty-three hundred units of of demand that haven't been accounted for over the next twenty years. And that's just our moderate scenario, could actually be uh even more, i- if if taking our more aggressive scenario.
What we've heard from from the public, you know, people are open to mixed-use developments, including housing. They've offered that. There's a desire to balance residential development with office and retail to facilitate growth, right? So it's not just residential by itself. It's got to be connected to something that's more driven by the community oriented. It's got to be community oriented feel. Uh anecdotally, we heard several people come up in a, in age, you know, on both sides of the age range. There was someone who was very young and said, you know, I live near here, I work up here, this is, um I'd love to find a place to buy. Probably her desire would be to buy a single-family home, but she can't find anything and one of the reasons she can't find anything is because those people aren't leaving because they don't have a place to, either choosing that to go or, okay, what's my best? What are my other options? Okay, so again, locked in place. We've heard other people in the other and say, you know, I rent here, I'd love to find a brownstone or a townhouse, you know, I live, I rent a condo, I'm older, um but I'd love to kind of go into more of a, uh something I can actually purchase, where do I go? So it's that kind of, it's a, it's a broad range. Lots of opportunities for redevelopment of residential of these areas. Some are redevelopment. Some are new, just thinking about that. So um what a lot of people are seeing and what we've talked about is kind of that, I'm gonna say midsize density, but kind of three stories, four stories, people are most drawn to. I I I will say they're they're architecture aside, I think they're drawn to, if you look at each of those, it feels walkable, feels connected. I can get in my car and walk somewhere. That that's what they connect to. Um and so I think that's very good, whether it's very modern or much more of a traditional, um I think that's where people are drawn to. So we're you know, I think I'll repeat this about the recipe. It's a recipe. Doesn't mean you have, just because there's X number of units, you can have to put it in there, and it's over twenty years. So you have to think about how you, how that is scaled over twenty years and changing, right? Housing stock changes, ideas change over time, it has to be staged. Again, different stages of life, I mentioned this before, and the big things, right now you're kind of binary. How do you break that? Break it and get a different variety of housing types to to begin coming in here, um different, different types. Again, the more modern units are more pedestrian friendly, it's much more amenity rich. It targets younger workforces. If you're thinking about the people who are working in the state, state farm in those areas, how can they walk out and walk over to an apartment, to a condo they can live in? Where are they gonna go? You'll notice the the kind of more for sale multifamily residential units as well. You don't have, there's a desire for that and you can do that more. Um but there's then, the last one I think is the most important. You need to begin thinking about kind of the different amenities you offer, right? Whether it's urban townhomes. Um which you have some, you know, row hu- row houses, urban townhomes, you have some of that a little bit. Uh stacked flats, which are really targeted towards people who don't really want to go, you know, you know, their apartments on the, their townhomes on their side, right? So they're kind of one story, maybe go up one store, but that's it. Two stories, they don't want to go up lots of flights of stairs, they don't want to have lots of, they want to be kind of more horizontal. Um especially if you're downsizing and you're and you're you're getting older, or sky condos, something that's more luxury, you can kind of target very unique sky condos and 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 different amenities. And so a variety of things to explore in that end as well. I know that residential caused some conversation. So what I want to do briefly is um and there's a couple of other things. Again, return to targeting, I mentioned this, target downsizers. We have to break them until it's north of the perimeter, you're outside the, you're on the perimeter, you are the nexus of where everyone's coming. I mean, this is, you've got Marty, you've got four hundred, you've got thirty-five, you're, you've got path four hundred nearby. I mean, you are right where you want to be. He's got to leverage all those different tools. Yep, yeah.
Right, if we could.
Absolutely. So we're good. We can share more about, but I'm happy to.
Okay, so we have a few minutes. If council has questions, um maybe take the screen off in case someone needs to ask something specific, questions, comments, thoughts? Anybody? So while everyone on council is thinking of their questions, um I want to talk about green space. So consistently, in the presentation you made for us, and what at least I'm hearing is the public becomes aware of this project, is is that what we don't need is what we have right now, which is lots of concrete. And one thing I'd like to suggest is that as we build towards the final product, the green space is where we start. And figure out how we're gonna make it that cool hit place that companies want to locate. And I think that starts with great outdoor spaces and connectivity with trails. And so the rest of it, I think, you know, we're gonna talk about and work through. But I think as a council, our clear priority has been connectivity, pedestrian and cyclist safety and green space. And when you drive down Ashford Dunwoody, even the lack of landscaping, or I'll turn it into a positive. The landscaping that they did at Lazy Dog was an immediate improvement to that corner. And it wasn't, you know, it's one corner and there are now trees there. So how we, you know, improve, improve that um is key to, I think, community acceptance of whatever we come up with. It cannot be what we have right now, obviously, and that's why we're doing this project. Questions, anybody? John?
Thank you for the presentation. Um when it comes to the area that we're looking at, what is the percentage of owner occupied versus rental?
Martin, do you have that off the top of your head?
Uh not a hard number, but I I do know that it's it's predominantly multifamily, almost exclusively multifamily. But we are starting to see the for-sale market shifting northwards and above the uh perimeter, so.
Alright, so when you say multifamily, but you're basically saying rental properties?
Yeah, we are talking uh rental properties. We we do see in addition to that uh demand, growing demand for um for for sale product, but it's still in its sort of nascent stages, but it is, it is there.
Alright, I'd see that as the biggest gap in the perimeter area in the sense that we don't have any owner occupied. There hasn't been a condo built in uh that area since we incorporated. And to me, you mentioned the fact that there's no turnover in the single-family homes because there's nowhere for those single-family homes to go. If uh, you know, my kids are gone, I want to downsize. If I don't want to rent, if I want to own in the perimeter area or own within the city of Dunwoody, there's very few condos for me to go to. And I'd love to see a way to increase the condo um multifamily livability in the area so that, you know, those single-family homes can turn over to younger families and just have more of a churn in the sense, because right now there is no churn if there's nowhere to go. So that's my main concern of that.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. I mean, that's really the driving force right now of the for-sale, higher density for sale product is a you know, one group, the important one is the lock and leave crowd, you know, the empty nesters who perhaps live somewhere else during the winter or some, you know, for a few months of the year and 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 things like that are really what are driving uh high, higher density owned product in in these kind of locales.
And I want to point out that three oh three four six got their first housing with individual garages when towns and townhomes were built. They're the only individual garages in that zip code. So there isn't much, to John's point, there's not a lot of ownership product. And perimeter is right here is three oh three three eight, but a little bit that way is three oh three four six. And that zip code is primarily rental. John, do you have a second question?
Yeah, one more question if I go. When you're talking about hotels, I didn't see any research when it came to a convention center. Is there any feasibility of a convention center need in the city of Atlanta and the pr- in the area, right on Marta? Is there a need for another convention center aspect? And could that be part of the uh area? And if so, would it feed hotels?
It, I can, I can answer from the land use level. Do you want to add to that, anything from your research?
Yeah, no, I mean, uh it 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 did sort of fall outside of our scope, but uh but definitely, I mean, convention meeting space is, it's it's a tough one. Uh it does generate hotel demand, of course, but but it is, it is a a tough one uh right now. Um that we're seeing trends sort of away from from that type of of activity. But at the same time, uh we can, we can take a little more of a, a look into that for you, if you like.
Yeah, right now there's very little convention space within the city. I mean, I think uh one of our hotels might have a little bit of meeting space. But to be honest, we are deficit in meeting spaces compared to hotel rooms. And I'd like to see more meeting space to drive that hotel industry. So thank you.
Uh Tom?
Uh I just had one quick question and just a quick comment. Uh when, on a competitive node positioning, I just want to clarify that those percentages between commercial and multifamily, is that, are those percentages based on square footage? Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't an acreage and like actual land uh calculation. That's what I thought. Okay, then I'll just end with a really brief comment. I echo everything that the mayor said. You know, when you visit world-class cities, there's a commonality there, and there are a lot of things that go into it, but one of the biggest commonalities is there's public spaces, there's pe- it's it's, they're built for people. Um and unfortunately, we are, mu- much of our city was built in an era that was built for cars. And uh we've got to figure out how we can do that transition, but you know, public plazas, um walkability, all of those things. Those are all the, I think, the foundation of any world-class city, and I think our aspiration here in Dunwoody should be nothing short of being a world-class city because of the four Ps, the potential's the big one. We have all of the potential in the world right here. We're positioned so uniquely to be the hub of basically the the engine of the southeast. Uh it's a matter of what we decide to do with it. And so let's make sure we get that potential thing realized so it's full. So that's all I have to say. And thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, okay, go ahead, Stacy.
Root quickly, sorry. It's in your presentation, but you didn't have a chance to touch on it. What are the next steps? I see this conservative, moderate and aggressive, like, what what are we gonna see next? And when?
So yeah, this is just to kind of show you what Martin, we're doing the moderate scenario. I just have a summary of the, you know, modernist focus there. Um next steps, we're taking those three kind of those three kind of considerations, potential physical people, build that into three scenarios. You know, that moderate program that we're thinking about and seeing, okay, what is that, where is that land physically? And then what does that mean? And that's where we're gonna test that. And that's what we test with the political component as part of that. What what's the reality? So that's what we'll be working in terms of workshops.
Alright, thank you. Um I uh we're, thank you, Michael. Thank y'all. I want to make a quick announcement because I love seeing all these faces here. If you're here um to uh hear about the First Baptist Church uh land, I think we've solved that last Wednesday. We removed eminent domain. We came to an understanding with the church. So if that's why you're here tonight, I'm sorry you didn't get the message. I know that Dr. George published it, talked about it Sunday morning, but I just want to set expectation. There's nothing on the agenda about First Baptist Church tonight. So we resolved that last Wednesday. There's no eminent domain case. The signs came down and we are at a very good place, I would say, with First Baptist Church. So thank you all for coming. If you're here for other reasons, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And with that, I need a motion for And with that, I need a motion for adjournment of this special called meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Rob.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We will be back in 10 minutes.